Good evening and welcome to those of you here at Town Hall and those watching on Westboro TV at home. My name is Brian McLaughlin, being the duly elected Chair of this, the Westboro Cable Advisory Committee, appointed by the Select Board of the Town of Westboro, Massachusetts, on June 30th, 2020, reappointed in 2021 as the issuing authority for a cable television license under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 166A. I call this meeting of the Cable Advisory Committee to order for the purposes of conducting a public hearing, being that it is 7:00 PM. I would like to entertain a motion from the committee to open this public hearing.
I'll make the motion?
A second.
Hearing, a motion, and it's seconded, the public hearing is now open, and I have some prepared remarks to read, so hang in with me, folks. The purpose of this public hearing will be to determine whether to issue a cable television license to Verizon New England Incorporated. Members of the public are invited to attend and be heard on the topics, whether the current cable operator, Verizon New England, is in full compliance with its existing cable license, and what are the town's future community cable-related needs. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 166A, Section 6, quote, "No license issued under Section 3, licenses for construction of operations of systems necessity, non-exclusiveness contents shall be granted until the issuing authority has held a public hearing thereon, first causing notice of the time and place of such a hearing, and of the subject matter sufficient for identification to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city or town, once in each of two successive weeks, the first publication being not less than 14 days before the day of such hearing, or if there is no such newspaper in such city or town, then by posting such notice in a conspicuous place in the city or town hall for a period of not less than 14 days before the day of such hearing. In the event more than one application is filled in any city or town, the issuing authority shall choose that applicant, or those applicants, which in its opinion will best serve the public interest. The issuing authority shall issue a public statement in writing containing the reasons for its acceptance or rejection of any and all applications," end quote. Note that all applications, reports, statements, and license drafts to be considered at this hearing that constitute public records under state law are available for public inspection during regular business hours and for reproduction at a reasonable fee. Notice that this public hearing was published in the Metro West Daily News on March 13th, 2022, and again on March 20th, 2022, fulfilling the notification requirement under Mass. General Law. Let me first introduce members of the committee. To my left is Stephen Hart, to my right is Shelby Marshall. I would also like to recognize the efforts of Karen Henderson, General Manager of Westboro TV, who has helped advise the committee on the overall needs of cable TV in Westboro. Thank you for the time and effort you have volunteered so far. I would also like to introduce Attorney William Hewig III of KP Law in Boston, to my far right, whose firm specializes in cable television licensing, who has been retained by the Town of Westboro for this renegotiation. Attorney Hewig has been working closely with the committee during this time, and has also worked on Westboro's behalf in previous cable TV-related negotiations. Thank you, Bill, for attending this evening and your work on the town's behalf. I would also like to inform our viewers that we do not have any representatives from Verizon New England with us this evening. They were extended an invitation, and we will ensure that they are provided with a copy of this public hearing. So now that we have the formalities aside, what is this public hearing all about? Essentially, it's pretty simple. Verizon's original 15-year cable TV license will expire this July. They wish to continue servicing the cable needs of Westboro. The Select Board is the issuing authority for the license. During the renegotiation period, a committee is appointed, that's us, and then we work the process with our council and Verizon until we have a license that we recommend for approval and issuance by the Select Board. Approximately two years before the existing license is set to expire, the town and the cable TV provider may begin the renegotiation process. This period entered into is called the ascertainment period, which we are in now. During the ascertainment period, the committee examines the current contract, gathers information from the town, and also convenes a public hearing, during which the public may attend and be heard on whether the current cable operator is in full compliance with its currently existing cable license, and what are the town's future community cable TV-related needs, and that's what we're doing here tonight. For each cable TV license or renew a license, this process has been in place, and due to the extensive relationship between the town and Westboro TV, Inc., a nonprofit corporation charged with operating the PEG, Public Education Government Cable Channels, they have presented their business plan and budget highlighting the cable-related needs of the town. As this hearing progresses, we will have short presentations from Westboro TV in the form of testimonial videos, as well as submitted statements from those who could not attend this evening. With that aside, I'd like to welcome you all for attending this evening. I will open the floor for comments shortly, and everyone who wishes to speak will be given the opportunity, but before I do that, I'd like to clear up any possible preconceived ideas or expectations as to what the town can stipulate in a cable TV license. And for this, I'd like to introduce our attorney, William Hewig III of KP Law. He's going to give us a very brief, high-level overview, and I'll turn it over to you, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, and members of the public. I'm going to just start off the way I always do at these hearings, and tell you there's good news and there's bad news. I'll start with the bad news first. The bad news is the three things that most people come to these hearings wanting to get from their new cable license you're not going to be able to get. Those are lower rates. The Select Board, the issuing authority, does not control rates. Rates are unregulated because we have competition here in town. Even if they were regulated, they'd be regulated by the state, but we don't have cable rate regulation anymore. So the market has to decide rates. I'm sorry to have to tell you, they probably won't go down. The second thing that people come here wanting sometimes is program changing, programming changes, and unfortunately, we don't have any control over that either. Issuing authority by FCC regulation and statute is not permitted to negotiate programming changes or channels in the new license. That also is to be determined by the market. The final thing that a lot of people come to these hearings wanting to talk about or hear is control or changes in broadband and the provision of internet services by your cable operator. Now, this license will govern only the right of Verizon to send cable signals through its cables. It doesn't govern the right of Verizon to send broadband or telephone, so we have no regulatory powers over broadband, we have no regulatory powers over cable. We do, over cable, no regulatory powers over broadband, no regulatory powers over telephone services. So there you have it, that's the bad news. By the way, if any of you wish to talk about those things, you're perfectly welcome to do so. It's just that the Select Board cannot control any of those during the course of our negotiations for a renewal license. But Verizon is listening, and if you have anything you want them to hear about rates, programming, or broadband, you are welcome to do so. Now let's get to what you can get. The things that we can get, that we're within our control when we negotiate a license, and the things that are negotiable and we can change, include a list of license terms and provisions, and here it is. The term of the license. Now, Verizon licenses have been reduced in the term of years from 10 down to five. That's by choice of Verizon. So we can negotiate a license between three and five years. The license term is not a huge factor when you're dealing with Verizon. Most cable operators, it's 10 years. Verizon has gone down to five. That's just a company policy that they enacted about three years ago, and we have no control over that. We can and do frequently negotiate service area. In other words, build out number of homes per mile, what is called setback, that is, how far back from the property line of the plant free cable service will be provided. We can and do negotiate insurance that the cable operator is obligated to provide indemnity provisions, and bonds, the amount of construction and performance bonds they give. There are rights that the subscribers have, such as the right to be protected by customer service standards established by the FCC. Signal quality is controlled by FCC regulations and is negotiable, and Massachusetts billing practice standards are also part of the license, and are also negotiable. In addition to that, we have the right to inspect, that's negotiable. We have the right to inspect the paperwork, right to inspect their complaint files, the right to inspect the actual plant itself, all negotiable. License enforcement provisions are negotiable, so for example, if the licensee's out of compliance, we have written into our current license and will have written into the new license what are called liquidated damages. In other words, if they are found to be out of compliance, they'll have to pay a certain amount of money each day until they get back into compliance. That's the only way to enforce compliance of a cable company. And finally, most importantly, what we can get in these licenses is money. The money that we get goes to support cable-related purposes within the town, and by and large, that is mostly the services provided to you by your cable provider, Westboro TV, WTV. There are three channels, there are public education and governmental access channels, and the money that we get and negotiate that comes from the cable licenses goes to support the future provision of those services for the town. That's why we're here, that's what we can get and what we can't get, and with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate that. Next, I'd like to introduce committee member Steve Hart, who is going to give us an overview of the needs of Westboro TV. Steve?
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, everybody. The Board of Westboro TV...
Steve, if you can just...
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
The Board of Westboro TV believes that the station plays an important role in our town, and has proven to be an excellent steward of the funds provided by Verizon over the past 15-year term of the contract, and every dollar of income is being focused on providing the level of coverage and service that WTV believes the community deserves. As has been alluded to, WTV is not funded through town taxes, rather they rely on the monies paid by the cable providers, Verizon in this case, and Charter also, and based on their cable revenues, which are driven by their number of cable subscribers. And as the number of cable subscribers diminishes through cord cutting, as it's called, their cable revenue goes down, which in turn means less money paid to Westboro TV. So WTV remain concerned that the trend of decreasing revenues and increasing demand across all sectors continues to challenge the station at each and every day, as the team continues to try to do more with less. Westboro TV's five-year business plan has been shared with the Cable Advisory Committee, and it's based on both the operating and capital budget needs, which include additional resources to handle the increasingly wide range of coverage residents have come to expect. To help fund the future needs of Westboro TV, we are being asked to consider, to seek an increase in the gross annual revenue percentage received from Verizon from 4% to 5%. That's the maximum actually allowed by regulations, so no higher than that. The Westboro TV capital forecast over the next five years for purchases of equipment, maintenance of the Westboro TV building, which result in a needed capital investment of $40,000 per year, equal to $200,000 over the life of a new contract. Through effective use of past capital grants, Westboro TV has worked hard to raise the standard of its cameras, technology, and equipment to a point where everything produced is in high-definition format. Currently, Verizon have only provided standard-definition channels for playouts, thus the quality of output to the viewer is very much diminished despite the efforts of the Westboro TV team. Going forwards, we trust the committee will seek the provision of three high-definition platforms in the future contract, one for each of the public, educational, and government channels. And in summary, over the course of the last 15 years, much has changed in the world. This all comes at a cost, and in order to continue serving the missions and goals of our local access station, Westboro TV requires continued strong funding from the next Verizon license, so as to maintain the level and quality of service our community has come to expect. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. All right, in just a couple minutes, we're going to open the floor to public comments, but first we have a couple of video testimonials prepared by Westboro TV, and can you go ahead and roll those, please?
Hi, this is Paul McGrath from On the Sidelines, the cable TV show here in Westboro that talks about sports and how sports interacts with your lives. But today, I'm not on the sidelines, I'm going to be inside the sidelines, talking about cable TV right here in Westboro, and in other towns and communities that have local access channels. Local access channels really comes under the acronym of PEG. PEG is P-E-G, Public Educational Government. The public. Well, that's me. How did someone like me get on public access? Well, that's what it's for, it's for the local folks. It started with a fellow by the name of the Reverend Bob Brown. Bob Brown had a show here, talking to the old townies. What was Westboro like? Well, that was a great show. Not only did you talk about it, but you had the townies there. You had the Charlotte Spinnies, you had the Dark Hennessys. That gave me the idea of having the sports show. Let's tie sports into the local community. And I was able, and I am able, to do what I can, to have local sports celebrities. How is sports tied to the community, to your life? What did it mean before you were in sports, after you're in sports, maybe during sports? And is it a legacy? My first guest was George Summers. We tell that we got taped in July, and he gave kind of a, you know, discourse, or let it out of the bag, that in that February, coming February, he was going to be elected into the Wall of Fame in Daytona, Florida. He was a race car driver. Let's go to educational. What do we have on educational? Well, again, let's go back to the pandemic. Sports, couldn't go to the sports. Your child, your grandchild, whatever, final baseball game, final soccer game, couldn't go. But local access cable televised and broadcast and recorded every game. They got out there, they were doing extra work. Not only that, there was a collaboration with the other local cable access stations in the area to make sure that when Westboro was on the road, that game was televised or broadcast back to the local community here. It was local cable access that gave everyone the opportunity to see what was happening in the schools, for the students, for everyone involved. Again, local cable access, tremendous opportunity for everyone to see what was going on. It was a difficult time, the pandemic. You couldn't go to the games, you couldn't do what we normally did. Westboro Cable helped get us through that. And let's go to the last one here. Your government station, so those meetings were all broadcast, they were all zoomed, and our community access staff, they were working overtime. They did a lot extra because of the pandemic, but because of the local access, the government meetings, et cetera, were able to be shown. And that's part of the G, that's part of the last leg, P-E-G, that's the government part of local cable access. So from on the sidelines, this is Paul McGrath saying, thanks for watching, but more importantly, thanks for watching Westboro Cable Access. It is your local conduit to see what is happening in the community and what is happening. I give a big thank you to not only Westboro Cable, but to all the local cable access communities, stations here in Massachusetts and wherever else they may be. This is Paul McGrath from On the Sidelines, saying, I hope to see you at the game, and if you're not in the game, I hope to see you on the sidelines. And this time, I'll add, we're on Westboro Cable. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Lepred. I'm the Borough Program Coordinator. I am responsible for making sure that operations run smoothly between the classroom side of the Borough Program and the Sugar Shack side, and everything is integrated, and as our students work in the store, they are fulfilling all the goals in their IEPs and their transition plans. The impact that Westboro TV has had on the Borough Program, especially this last year, has been that it's really allowed us to, helped us remain connected to the community. As our students have been here, and the store has been open, but not open to the public, Westboro TV has let us inform the public of the good work that's going on here, that our program staff on the classroom side and our store staff have been doing to support the students of the Borough Program. Our experience working with Westboro TV has been fantastic. They're always so responsive. If we reach out and say, hey, we've got this going on, that going on, can you send someone to film it for us? They're right there. In fact, this past holiday season, we wanted to find some way to do our gingerbread event that we had started the year before, that was live and in person, pre-COVID, where Amber Bach Superintendent came and was decorating gingerbread houses with the members of the community and kids, and we really, it was such a fun event, and we thought, well, we can't, we're not open, we can't do that. So we called Westboro TV, and they came and figured out a way to shoot the whole thing and livestream it, and it became a really, really popular event that was interactive with folks online. Everyone loved it, and, you know, we're trying to figure out now a way this year to do maybe both at the same time, and do live and in person and livestreamed. And on the classroom side, Westboro TV has been great with providing opportunity to our students who have an interest in media and video, to go and have a really immersive job experience, work experience over with them. So we are so appreciative of that. Westboro TV is so important for this community, I think because it cares so much about the community. We say all the time that, you know, they don't just show up to document something. They show up to an event, and they really care about what the event is and what message you're trying to deliver, and then they, you know, they film it in a way that really gets that across, and they're just wonderful to deal with, and they're just, they have their finger on the pulse of the community and really care about what's going on here, and care about making sure that everyone knows what's going on here.
Great, thank you very much, Karen and staff at Westboro TV. At this point, I would like to ask anybody to come forward and speak. All I ask is that you just state your name and address for the record, or if you work for the Town of Westboro, just let us know what department you work for. So, anyone want to be first? Come on up.
Good evening, Tom McDermott for McTaggart Street. I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to Westboro Television, and specifically Karen Henderson and her staff for their dedication to televising so many of the high school sporting events over the past many years. As a parent of high school athletes, it is a tremendous asset and thrill to watch soccer, basketball, and hockey games on Westboro TV. In particular, Westboro TV has made a huge effort in televising many, if not all, of the high school boys' hockey games over the past few seasons. This has not only allowed family members from outside of Westboro to watch the games, but those of us who travel or happen to be out of town have also had the opportunity to watch from afar. More recently, Westboro TV televised 18 More recently, Westboro TV televised eighteen hours of town meeting, town meeting, and then at the next day at nine AM, they were at the rec basketball playoffs to capture all those games. So just a huge shout out to Karen and the team. Speaking of rec basketball, the televised games along with the weekly full-court press, student-sponsored show, have been a huge boost to morale at the high school during the past few years of COVID. I found myself going back to watch the games after completion to relive some of the exciting plays. This is only possible due to Westboro TV's willingness and dedication to deliver a superior product. Karen and the team's work has not gone unnoticed as the student athletes and parents of the town recognize how lucky they are to have the finest in community television. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Silverberg. I am Chair of the Planning Board, proud parent of three children, and Verizon Fios subscriber. I'm here for two reasons. One, to represent the Planning Board and the value that Verizon and Westboro TV provide to the community and to the Planning Board in particular as a source of information, a source of, you know, news and events in town. I think it's valuable. Unfortunately, the Planning Board doesn't quite have as many visitors as you do tonight, but we do connect to the community, and many people watch our meetings and the Select Board meetings and many of the government meetings, as well as local sports and so on. And, you know, as a consumer, I was probably one of the first people to subscribe to Verizon. I was so fast on that, they, I didn't even get the free TV they gave away. So, and I've been very happy with Verizon, but one of the reasons I've been happy is the local programming. And I can't stress the importance of that to me in my decision to continue as a subscriber. During COVID, my son played varsity basketball. The only way I could watch that was Verizon TV, I mean, Westboro TV, sorry. You know, I'm constantly looking to the local stations for a source of local news that I can't really get anywhere else. There's not, not many news outlets here that I can look to. One of the other reasons I really like Westboro TV is that it memorializes events in town. Even if I don't watch it live, I'm able to record events. And in particular, I don't know if you're familiar with the Ladybug song that Armstrong does every year, and my daughter was a ladybug, anyway. And the only video I have of that was from Westboro TV. And it's one of my fondest memories of her from elementary school. So I would encourage anybody watching this, anybody listening, to support our local programming. It's very valuable to me and important to me, and I hope it continues.
Thank you very much, sir.
Five Weld, he does his address.
Mark, Five Weld Street, right? Five Weld?
Seven.
Seven.
Hi, I'm Chris DiCetti, Thirteen State Street. And as a resident and father, at one second everything, we just heard about school sports and keeping in touch with governance in our normal, busy lives, and Westboro TV on an individual level is very important for me. I'm also the president of the Westboro Community Land Trust, and I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about what a great partner Westboro TV has been for us. So we are a local nonprofit with the goal of protecting open space in town and promoting its use, and we do that through education. And so we hold events, educational or otherwise, kinds of events about once a month throughout the year, right? That includes Icky Winter, it includes the entire pandemic, and Westboro TV has just been instrumental in helping us engage the whole community, not just the people that can make it outside in bad weather or to an in-person event. So, so these sorts of events include, you know, nature talks. We've had a number of nature photography programs, a photography contest that had fourteen hundred entries from around town. I make a point of all that because high definition would be great for those sorts of events. We also have an annual meeting every year where all of our business has to be performed. And Westboro TV has broadcast all of those, but done it in a way that's super engaging and useful for us, right? So there's a simultaneous broadcast, which allows us to, when necessary, work out a situation through instant messaging or whatever, where people can watch remotely and actually interact. So in a seminar, in a talk, they can ask questions. In our annual meeting, they can actually ask questions, comment, and vote, right? So that's really important. All the events then are archived for people to watch later if they don't have time. And in many cases, Karen and the Westboro TV staff are so engaged in town, knowing what's going on, that they can make the links that really kind of improve the understanding, right? So, so one of our major events in the town last year was the acquisition of a new piece of land, the Zwicker property. We had a dedication event, which Westboro TV broadcast. But if you look and see where that's posted online, it's linked to a previous interview with the hundred-year-old matriarch of the Zwicker family, who spent an hour talking about the history of the town and the history of the land and so forth, so, which is nothing that we knew, right? So now that's there for people to see, and as we develop with the town, the land and the documentation, the history of that, we have that to work with as well. So I guess I'll just sum up by saying, Westboro TV has been a great partner. Certainly, we've relied on them a lot during the pandemic, but I don't see that changing post-pandemic. If anything, we've just learned how to reach more of the community, and we're gonna, we're hoping to do more of that.
Thank you very much. All right, this is great.
Good evening, you get two for one tonight.
Tall and short. Hi, I'm Chris Allen, and I've been a board member of the Westboro Historical Society for about fifty years.
And my name is Leslie Leslie. I'm also a board member of the Westboro Historical Society. Chris dragged me in about twenty-four years ago.
And I live at eight Edward Dunway. What I wanted to say is that Westboro Cable TV is critical for keeping local history alive. One reason is that people have to know the history of the town, the background of the town, to appreciate it, to love it, to feel connected, and then to make a bright future. That wouldn't happen unless the local history was somehow broadcast to the, basically to anybody who is interested, and even those don't even know they're interested until they see on cable TV our monthly programs that you can see simultaneously or later on because they're recorded. We have had, for instance, a history of all the churches in Westboro, all thirteen different faiths in Westboro from seventeen seventeen to twenty twenty-two. A program like that is so important educationally to open the world. But what is even more important is that many people couldn't come to Westboro Historical Society monthly programs during COVID and even before because we have relatively small areas. However, during COVID and when Westboro Cable TV broadcast our shows, we had many, many people tuning in and learning all kinds of aspects about local history. It's wonderful for people who have been here forever to see their history that they remember. But even more important, a third of our town is new. They come from a lot of different cultures, and they don't understand perhaps or want to know more about this place they've moved in. How do they do that? By tuning into the Westboro Historical Society programs monthly. And because most people now are used to turning a dial or pressing a button and seeing the programs, that's how they learn. We're trying to do intergenerational programs to bring in the kids, and you can do that through cable TV. So it's so important that Westboro Cable TV is part of our connecting and educating the community about their town. Thanks.
So I'd like, I'm here also to advocate that you really work out a contract, that you support the work of Westboro TV and keep it going. For us, it's been the, the way that we're connecting to families, to residents, to businesses in a whole new way. And what has been really interesting is we've been working with the Westboro Public Schools around local history for over twenty, twenty-five years, you probably said thirty-five years. But now they have come in and helped us record a lot of the pieces of that programming. So they have come in and followed our docents in our museum rooms and captured the history and what we have so that those students who could not attend have that access to that programming. They have come with me into our cemetery across the street here and filmed that programming and connected to us so that our programming is not only live for students, but captured for students who might be absent that day. So there's that educational piece that's so, so vital, that's continuing even today, continuing their asking for different types of programming. And that's what I see is the potential there to increase the work that we do through their activities. I mean, we wouldn't be where we are today after COVID if we didn't have Westboro TV. They kept us alive, they kept our people coming to programming, and because they put it up on their website, a lot of our residents who might be traveling or go to Florida for several months of the year have access to all their programming so that they don't miss a beat. So it's such a vital connection for us at the Historical Society, and I just hope you make sure that that continues. Thank you.
It's critical. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Hello.
I'm Luann Crosby, and I live at Thirteen Cross Street. And I'm a singer-songwriter as well as other things. And I do, I perform a lot at nursing facilities, memory care units, assisted living, that kind of thing. Or, or I did for many years, well, starting about twenty twelve, when my mother died, she was at Beaumont. And I thought, I can't just stop going and playing, so I went every Sunday until you-know-when, March of twenty twenty, when we couldn't go anymore. And there were all of these people in that population, elderly population, you know, every, looking forward to the music, to every week, and all of a sudden, I can't go anymore, and I feel really bad, and I know they feel isolated. What can I do? So I went to Westboro TV, and I said to Karen Henderson, is there something we can do? And she said, yes, of course, we can video your program. And thus, the Peeps Musical Hour was born. We did one, which led to another. It was broadcast on cable. All the people at Beaumont here could see it, the Beaumont in Northborough where my mother was could watch it. And it was just, you know, to me, it, this population suffered so much during the pandemic. I mean, even their family members couldn't go see them. I mean, that was, to me, heartbreaking. So, so I think that that is really important. And one more, just quick story. I was sitting on my patio last year when the weather was nice, and a car pulled up, and an elderly man got out with a cane, and he walked across the street and down to my patio and introduced himself. He said, I'm Chief Parker. And he was the chief of fire in the town for many years. And he said, I just want to tell you, I watch your music on the cable station, and you sing all the songs that my late wife and I, we loved, and we used to go to the club and listen to these music, and we just love it, and, you know, you could do that one by Frank Sinatra or something. And I said, you know, you can go to my Intranet site too, my Intranet site, and there's more. And he went, well, you know, I don't really do that, you know. I am so glad we have Westboro TV. And I just want to say, I am so glad we have Westboro TV for that very reason. We need to remember the population that doesn't just go to the website. You know, they, they rely on being able to turn on the TV and watch the program, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Okay, I'm the other half of the team. I'm Christopher Noonan from Thirteen Cross Street. I just want to accolade Westboro TV for really their flexibility and innovation. A few years ago, when we were having our three-hundredth anniversary, a group of us got together and thought it would be sort of interesting to try to experiment to do some architectural walking tours with music. So we reached out to Westboro TV and staff, and they jumped on board right away. And we also reached out to Library's Center for History and Culture, they also joined us, and since then, we've produced, since then, we've had actual walking tours of about fifteen, and we're still in the production part because that got slowed down by COVID. Each one of the walks actually usually has a guest. Most of them are Westboro residents, most of them are professionals either in the natural resource environment or the built environment that we live in. What I think is also to be noted is, it's not like Westboro TV is some large organization. We had Karen Henderson out in the middle of a snowstorm. We had Jeff, what was Jeff's last name? Jeff, on our first walking tour, it was twenty degrees, we had thirty people. We actually had another staff member, it was eighty-five degrees, and we had about eighty-five people. So it's a real cross-section, but they're, they work with you. They want the content. We like the ability to be expressive about the community we live in. So we fully support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Karen Chapman, and although I'm not a resident here, I am the president of the quarter-nine, four ninety-five Regional Chamber of Commerce that covers the community of Westboro. Truly, I've been inspired by hearing about the heartbeat of this community, which is your residents and your local community organizations and programs here, that Karen and her team tirelessly cover all the wonderful things that are happening in Westboro. But I'm here tonight to speak on another important part of your community, and that is your business community. And the work that Karen Henderson and Westboro Cable TV do to cover the important issues that have a big impact on our business community. Sometimes those are celebration moments when we have our annual meeting and we award business for their achievements here in our towns. And sometimes it's our legislative breakfast, which covers all the key issues impacting this region and particularly infrastructure, some of the other local issues that are affecting our town. And sometimes it's just the scholarship awards that we give to graduating high school seniors for all the proud work and accomplishments they've had here in Westboro. And another big important part about that is, is the key celebrations of the grand opening of business. I can't think of a better way to be able to celebrate what is both the heartbeat of this community, which is your business community, and the wonderful community organizations that you have here in Westboro. I've been with the chamber for over twenty years, and Karen and her team has tirelessly been to every event to be able to broadcast, to show what this community means to businesses and what this business community brings to this community. I can't think of a better way than to continue to offer that fine, amazing program than to support the Westboro TV cable station and continue the wonderful programs that they provide to this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Michael Beretti, fifty-four Adams Street, Chair of the Advisory Finance Committee. I was going to give you a little dissertation about what we do, but I think everybody knows, so I'll just get to the point. The nature and subject matter and the implications of our recommendations to the town meetings require our processes be absolutely transparent, and Westboro TV is crucial to that transparency. Its broadcasts of our meetings establish a direct, easily accessible, and effective means of regularly communicating with our citizens. And when we combine it with other platforms, it actually allows us to have a two-way dialogue. Westboro TV is a window through which the citizens of this community see, hear, become informed about, and ultimately can influence the shape of the municipal financial, financial policies and practices that affect their everyday lives. Broadcasting our meetings is but one of many ways Westboro TV creates value for this town. Through a well-structured, mutually beneficial agreement... Through a well-structured, mutually beneficial agreement with our town that includes funding for Westboro TV, Verizon has an opportunity to continue to be a part of this process and signal to its local subscribers, like me, that it too wants to add value to the Westboro community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Holly Kenny, twenty-four Thomas Newton Drive. And when I thought about what I wanted to say tonight, which many, many people have in a very robust and eloquent way, I was thinking, from what hat do I want to speak? And there's a lot of hats. So as a parent, as Mark Silberberg mentioned, there's nothing, you can, we can watch this all online, we can catch it later on, but there's nothing like seeing it live when you can't be at your kid's, my eighth grader's basketball game, or my daughter's choral concert that I will never see again because she's a senior. So watching that live when you can't make it, there's something about that that is just priceless. As the Chair of the Westboro Cultural Council, and I'm also on the Subcommittee for Arts in Common, Westboro TV has been there since its inception. I think we are now in our twelfth year with Arts in Common. And every year, without fail, they are there to record, to participate, to bring people together, not just from our community but other communities. They are, they're there all the time, you can always count on them. And as a small business owner, I've participated in the Westboro Farmers Market since it began ten-plus years ago. And as well, Karen Henderson and her team are always there to record, like the opening day, which is really great because it brings people from other communities, not just Westboro, but other communities, to experience our town and purchase from vendors at the market and, and bring that business back in. And finally, as a member of the Westboro Economic Development Committee, I know that Westboro TV is always there to record our annual awards banquet ceremony, recognizing different businesses in town, and that's critical. So you can't go somewhere and look in town and not see Westboro TV. I can't think of a, a better way to connect and unite people than, than with Westboro TV and what Karen Henderson and her team does. And they do it with such passion that I don't want to think about what it would be like if we didn't have them. So just urging you to fund them and continue to do that through Verizon because that's a critical part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ian Johnson, nine Burgess Adams Way, and current Chair of the Select Board. And I have notes from my wife, too, who sit in the back, but she's making me speak. And a lot of it is echoing what folks said, but, but I think I want to hit really on the P, the E, and the G. And I'll finish with, with the G as a, as a Select Board member. But I kind of want to echo what, what Holly just said and others have said is, I don't know that you can go to an event in this town, whether it's public, educational, or government, that, that Westboro TV is not there. And that's, that's pretty amazing. I think we're lucky, luckier than many, but it's really a testament to, A, the work that's put in, but it's also a testament to the people in this community and the value that they put in that public access television. So two, Verizon, this is really essential to this community. And we urge them to continue to support the work that's done here. On the public side, you know, we talked a lot about COVID. One of the events that I was involved in is our annual Westboro Good Scout Awards Ceremony that's gone on for twenty years. And when COVID hit, and it's a kind of a grand event we do, and usually up at the Double Tree Ballroom, and we couldn't do it, sat down with Westboro TV and Karen and figured a way that we could do a, kind of a, a remembrance of the past twenty years of Good Scout and really reflect on it and keep that alive with an event that, that really kept the, the tradition going, the momentum going, and allowed us to continue that. And then, as we came out of COVID, to do it back in person, which they also have filmed. And they, the, the nice thing about doing it in the COVID environment is they were able to go back through all of the past Good Scout Award dinners that they had filmed and put that out in front of the public, which was, which was really special. Other things, and whether they fall in the P or the E, but we talked about sports, and we talked about the concerts. I think back about, I'm getting wrong, but it was a Go and Buggy when my son was at Hastings School, and they talked about other things. But they are there for all of that. And then the trivia be the turkey trot. And town meeting, who could forget our, our nineteen-hour marathon we had this week that we, and they were there throughout it. And then came to our Select Board meeting that following Tuesday after, after the Saturday meeting and said, hey, we know it was long, we, but what we did is we went and basically put chapters for each article. So someone going back in now can say, oh, I want to look at Article twenty-three because that one, I want to watch it again. And they can go right to Article twenty-three and see that. So it's just amazing, the work they do to help this community. And I think the other piece on that, before I get to the government piece, is just really the, the evolution of Westboro TV. And, and you know it well, but, and you talked about the high def, but just the work they've put in to continually look to improve what they can do with the dollars that are shown to them. And then really, they make, they stretch a dollar further than many of us know. But, but, you know, the professionalism that they're able to put out and the evolution of what they've done is just remarkable, but it's really important that that funding continues. And then finally, the government part, I've been involved for probably way too many years between Finance Committee and now, I think, my fourth term on the Select Board. But they, Westboro TV has been there every step of the way, as, as some others spoke to. But, you know, we are amazed on the Select Board about how many people in the community will stop us and say, you know, hey, I was watching you on TV, and you said this, can I ask you this question, whatever. I'm sure we track it, but I'm amazed, but how many people in this town watch the Select Board meetings? And we know it's not because of our good looks. And, but it is so important and valuable to them if they can't make it down here, but they're watching. And we know they're watching, and that's important. My final thing I'll say is, I am scared about high def because the one thing I get all the time from folks is that, that camera that's behind you, they keep telling me that they can see that my hair is receding more and more in the back. So maybe not, but maybe the standard definition is better than the high def. But, but just, just in closing, this is so, I just want to say again, this is so important. I urge Verizon as they listen to this, that this really is the lifeblood of this community. It's, it's the, the pictures and the voice that's brought out to the community that keeps, one of the ways it keeps this community so special. So please continue that funding for this essential service for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Walter Leslie, two oh seven West Main Street. I'm here to speak in support of the value of Westboro TV to our community. Beyond the entertaining youth sporting events and art performances, I would like to highlight two other important Westboro TV services of value to me. First, support of local nonprofit organizations. Westboro TV creates and airs short videos or PSAs for many of our local nonprofit organizations. I am a member and past president of Westboro Civic Club, and able to say we have received wonderful and humorous, sometimes, support from Westboro TV for our annual Christmas tree fundraiser and fishing challenge community event. Not only do they do the upfront work, but we often, or usually sometime during the event, get visited by one of the Westboro TV members, and they'll do some, some additional video, which has been great. I'm aware that Westboro TV has supported many other local organizations similarly. Another service of importance is Westboro TV's broadcast of many public meetings. As a citizen and member of the Finance Committee, as Mike spoke to, I find tremendous value in being able to watch town board meetings from home, like Select Board, School Committee and Planning Board and others, all broadcast by Westboro TV. I feel public meetings being available to view is important to our local democracy, enhances transparency of decisions made, and provides a large benefit to our community. And finally, I hope as a Verizon customer that Verizon joins me and values these services to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Wendy Wilsker, ten High Street. So I want to also talk about Westboro TV as a classroom and a learning lab. Karen Henderson has created an incredible partnership with Kathy Stoker for Westboro High School's journalism students. Both of my sons participated in journalism, and Tom McDermott mentioned full-court press. Who would ever imagine that six kids could create a TV show? That this TV show would be full-court press about rec basketball in their town. They weren't just fans, they were reporters, they were analysts. They created soundbites, they created the entire program. And they love going to Westboro TV. It was a pivotal part of their high school experience. They have Westboro TV hats, Westboro TV stickers. This was a, you know, incredible experience that many other towns don't have. Many other journalism classes do not have that opportunity to learn print journalism and broadcast journalism. And so this is an incredible resource and a gift to our community. And Karen Henderson and her team have just enriched our students' experiences. So I really urge Verizon to continue their support of Westboro TV.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening. Kelly Petralia, one forty-three Fisher Street. I am the Executive Director of a community nonprofit called Westboro Connects, and I've been a resident here for over twenty years. I'm happy to stand before you tonight in support of Westboro TV. Westboro TV serves as a very important, a very important role in our community by making the many community programs, local sporting events, celebratory events, fine arts programming, and town committee and department meetings accessible to all, regardless of their ability to attend something in person. They also offer original programming that supports a strong sense of community and pride in Westboro. At Westboro Connects, we rely on Westboro TV to record and broadcast many of our community programs. They also enable us to share the information and resources we offer with, with the broader community. The entire organization, Karen and her team, is easy to work with, flexible, and willing to be collaborative partners on the projects we have worked on with them. In my years, in my experiences over the years, Westboro TV consistently produces high-quality professional programs that bring a positive viewing experience to those at home. In COVID nineteen, in the time of COVID nineteen, this level of quality, flexibility, and professionalism kept the community informed during a critical time, time when we were all stuck at home and unable to assemble in person. While people are doing more in person most recently, the need to reach people in their homes will remain. As a parent and community member, Westboro TV is a staple in the community for keeping me connected to the fun events, ceremonial events, town committee and governance meetings, and other forums. It is impossible to attend all the meetings that take place in this very busy and engaged community. I would not be able to stay informed on the town business without the ability to watch Westboro TV's broadcast of these events on an ongoing basis. I fully support, and as a Verizon customer, welcome and ask for a Verizon contract that is structured to fund Westboro TV, which is a critical resource in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Williams. I'm the Town Manager. I could speak at length about how Westboro TV gave value to the community during the, the pandemic. Certainly, working with Westboro TV and Karen and her team really helped us respond to something that was completely unprecedented, and we were really able to keep the community engaged in a time where everyone really needed a vehicle for that. Going on with the virtual meetings that we still are able to have under the governor's order, they continue to help people be remote, hybrid, in-person, and they're extremely flexible. I know we've called Karen at the eleventh hour, asking her to sort of change her plan and be available just to make sure that we're able to provide the, the tools for people to, to watch from home. So we have really appreciated all of that work. But their value is far beyond just responses to the pandemic. They're truly a communication tool for the community. Local government struggles all the time with giving many different options for communicating with residents. And we've found that Westboro TV, not only in coverage of our board and committee meetings, but also through coverage of different social events like Breakfast with the Chief or different shows such as Frank and Mary, we're really able to provide information in, in many different ways that's critically important to our residents as they start to consider articles for a town meeting or other important decisions that we're making in the community. So we look forward to continuing to work with them. We appreciate their willingness to be creative. Recently, they actually covered our Department of Public Works in an effort to really bring to the community information about how our departments are functioning. And so we look forward to continuing to work with them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Elena Moskell, three Carolyn Drive. So I really didn't watch Westboro TV that much, but now I will. I, I just want to say, like, for me, I've always supported Westboro TV. I've seen them a whole bunch of places, but I really, I kind of didn't appreciate them. But listening to, I spoke at the town meeting, too, and I had so many people reach out to me and say, oh, I saw you at the town meeting! And I was like, oh, it's a local celebrity. I'm available after for autographs. But I just thought that it was just wonderful. I mean, when we talk about government and transparency, it's just wonderful that people can, can still be connected. When, if they're broken down by articles, then people can follow it. I think about, like, the Historical Society, there are so many different talks on that website that is just wonderful for, you know, my parents are, are new and don't really know a lot of people and are a little lonely. And they have this amazing resource to learn about the place that they live in. This is great for the classroom. I've seen, I've seen the show, the Rec Ball Show, and watched a little bit. And it's just wonderful that these kids, these high schoolers, have an opportunity to shine, to share their passion, and be enthusiastic, and for the older community to see them and feel connected in that, in this community. It's such a beautiful community, and this is such a lovely snapshot to have. You know, you can go back, you know, months or years sometimes to see past, past events, which is just lovely to, to have that ability in this modern day and age. So I fully a hundred percent support it, and I, I want to see this continue on for my children to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Alan Edinburgh, eight Nash Street. I am a member, I'm speaking here as an individual, although I am a member of the Town Select Board and a trustee on the Town's Affordable Housing Trust. I won't reiterate what everyone has said about coverage and excellent flexibility and support and transparency. I will say that in order to run as a town, Westboro has over two dozen boards and committees. Among those, we have approximately four hundred volunteer positions. And for most of those committees, their work goes, the day-to-day, the month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter work goes unseen until it results in something that would end up at town meeting. COVID nineteen was, in some respects, a blessing in disguise. With the ability or the requirement that meetings were held remotely, Westboro TV, Karen and her team stepped in and went from regularly broadcasting a handful of meetings each month for a handful of boards and committees, to broadcasting, live streaming, recording for later broadcasts, or just online viewing, dozens of committees. Almost every committee and board had an opportunity to be recorded for future viewing. This gave our residents not only unprecedented access to the workings of government and every board and committee in town, but it served as a call to engage. I know individuals who, having watched committees that they may not even have known existed before or were curious about, step up to volunteer. We have residents who, seeing the work that certain boards and committees do, decided to run for office and make that commitment as well. So it's not just about transparency and communicating out, it's about the engagement back in. And, you know, so much of what happens in this town, you know, lives and breathes because of town meeting. So an informed, engaged citizenry makes town meeting as a democratic process more effective. So I stand here not just to call on Verizon to properly fund Westboro TV, but also but also to consider the quality of service Verizon FiOS is providing to the town. The intent to have high-definition channels is great. I would also love to see the ability, and I don't know if this puts more work on you and your team, to have the channel guides be accurate and not just generic three-hour blocks of time that say, "Local access, local access, local access." Give residents the ability to use that whole house DVR that the Verizon FiOS reps like to sell us and upsell us and provide Westboro TV with the viewership numbers. Let the TVs, let the team know what the reach is, how impactful it is. Let the boards and committees know that yes, when you're, when you're showing up at, you know, 9:30 on a Thursday morning, once a month for a meeting, that there are people watching either live or on-demand who care about what you're doing and who may want to get engaged. So it's, it's, it's the outflow of communications and information, it's the engagement back into town government and into the community that's so critical as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. My name is Roberta Sylvester Brown, and I live in 3 Washington Street. I want to speak from my heart because that's the only way I can speak. Karen and I have been working for years. So I am the chair on the Spirit Committee, and I did the 300th, I was the parade chairman of the 300th Parade. And I needed somebody right by my side to film this huge parade that we put together. And Karen just stepped right up with me, and we worked diligently. And I had cousins in Italy, and they wanted to see it, and Karen made sure that everybody could see it. And I do with the parades in town, and they did my father's Veteran of the Year. And Karen stepped right up to the plate, so I feel like she's my partner in crime with Jeff and Aiden. And they were always there for the community, for me when I set up events, because I'm in all the local organizations, which I love this town, and I have a lot of passion for this town. And so does Karen and the Westboro TV team. And my parents, they can't go anywhere. My mother doesn't drive, my father's in the hospital. So they can't watch local access TV only in their home, and he, he's always going, "Where's Karen Henderson?" So he, she, he's, the elderly people need that. They want to watch Westboro TV. And they can sit there in their own home and feel happy watching it. And I want to continue working with the team because they're my partners, and I can't, I can't praise them. And I love them a lot, and thank you for what all you do. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you very much. Sean Keough, 5 Yorkshire Circle, also a member of the Westboro Select Board. A lot's been said already. There's not too much I can add to what's been said. I would add that it is also a great opportunity for you to meet your candidates, and that's how they've been introduced themselves over the last few years, is through Westboro TV. Without that, there really was no opportunity for you to meet folks who are running for elected office in this town recently. But I just really wanted to say thank you to Karen Henderson, to Aiden Horrigan, and Jeff Poole. They have done a tremendous job for Westboro. I believe Westboro is a terrific community. It is made better by Westboro TV. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John, why don't you come on? You and Bill can wrestle for it.
Good evening. John Galloway, 32 Powder Hill Way. I'm here tonight on behalf of veterans. I'm the Veterans Service Officer, and I'm a member of the American Legion, and the veterans are far worse. And I guess full disclosure, I'm also treasurer of the Westboro TV. But I'm here tonight on behalf of veterans. And over the four or five years that I've been associated with these different organizations, I've been so impressed with Karen and her team in supporting veterans' issues. Two of the major events that we sponsor are Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And during COVID, she did an absolutely outstanding job in bringing together a virtual program. Not as good as the real thing, but she did a fantastic job. We have about 534 veterans living in Westboro, and I look on Westboro TV as a really essential medium to reach out to those veterans in town. She does a super job in covering the parades, the Memorial Day, Veterans Day Parade, what have you. But in addition to that, we have the Veterans Corner, where we, trying to get it started up again, where we interview veterans with stories of interest and so on and so forth. In addition, in the past, pre-COVID, she's covered such events as the, we did fundraising events for the troops that were deployed in Iraq. And again, she came out on a Saturday morning and covered the packaging and the shipping and all that stuff. And I just, just want to conclude by saying that I look on Westboro TV from the veteran's point of view of really being an outstanding tool of reaching out to those people in our community who have served our country and may be in need of help and assistance, which is part of what I do as Veterans Service Officer. But I want to, again, applaud Karen and her team. They've just done an outstanding job in supporting veterans' causes. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking.
Thanks, John.
Bill, 22 Smith Street, longtime resident here in town, actually a fourth generation here in town. I hope that you hear that Westboro TV has had continuous improvement from the Little Red Barn down in the alley to the local, right up front downtown in a historic building. Not only that, there's continuous improvement in the staff and in the equipment that it brought. Karen and the equipment that is there now and her staff is at the highest of the mountain, there's no question. But then there's people like Brian that's been involved for all these many years to help us in the equipment and programming and et cetera. And for that, we need to keep this clear. During, as you've heard so many stories and being involved in so many committees, et cetera, here in town, I don't, I can't stay awake long enough to, to watch and stay involved. But during the pandemic, it was reassuring that, because I'm nosy, that I could pay attention to what was going on in various aspects in the town. Please keep us, support, the support to Westboro TV. We need it as a community. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I didn't want to follow Bill, but I'll do it.
All right, Ken.
Ken West, 9 Hyder Street. And since we're in the transparency business, also a board member of Westboro TV. But I'm, I'm here to tell a different story, even though it's slightly related. So much like Mark and some of the others here, my indoctrination into Westboro TV was through my kids. I have two kids. My youngest is a senior, and Go and Buggy, House for Hermit Crab, all of them. We watched them all on TV. We told the kids' friends, "Oh, I saw you on TV. Oh, that's awesome." They, you know, they just, you know, that's, and you just heard it with adults, with kids, with everybody. That's what Westboro TV is. People see each other on TV and, and they acknowledge it. And, and so in 2016, Karen asked me if I would be a board member, and I did. And it was at that time when, outside of the school stuff, I learned how much more the depth and the breadth of programming they provide. Obviously, all the, you know, the, so many meetings, religious ceremonies, local business, economic features. We've heard a lot about them. Veteran salute, senior programming, police and fire safety info, town celebrations, the list goes on. And not only that, but state-of-the-art equipment where any resident can walk in and dream up and create their own show. It's, it's an open, it's, it's, it's an open palette for anybody who, who's a citizen here, and that's, that's, that's an amazing resource. And like everybody else, I was so impressed during the pandemic. Nobody could be anywhere, but yet Westboro TV was everywhere, so. You know, I just want to speak to all that. And lastly, on a personal level, my son also is one of the hosts of the aforementioned Full Court Press Show. And he's also been doing some play-by-play for some rec ball games, some high school games, basketball, girls' basketball, football. He's done quite a few. And he's actually got quite an interest in pursuing some broadcast journalism classes in college. So you can see that this is more than, you know, just a channel. You know, Karen Henderson and her staff do an amazing job. They're everywhere. It's amazing the amount and quality of programming that they put out with such a small staff. And I would just reiterate what everybody else is saying, that I hope Verizon continues to fund this vital resource in our community, and thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Hi, I'm Lisa Coffey. I live at 256 West Main Street. In addition to working in the office with Karen and her team a few hours a week, I also work at the Congregational Church of Westboro. And I can say that during the pandemic, this, I think, you hear of all the amazing things they've done, and everything is important, but what was most important, I think, to a lot of the people that were in the willows, I think you heard Luanne touch on it with the music programs. There was a lot of people there. There are a lot of people there. They were scared. They couldn't see their families. They didn't know what was going on. A lot of them didn't know how much longer they had to live, and it was a scary time for everybody. So I think one of the most important things that Karen and her staff did was bring the worship services to the folks that couldn't get out and get to the church, the one place they would go every week. And just invaluable on what that did for those people. And I heard the comments all the time at the church and how these people, that, that, how that felt to them to be able to still connect with their church families. And I just, they went above and beyond, and as you know, church is wet on a Sunday. So how many churches in Westboro did they broadcast their services and the services on Sundays? They were everywhere. It didn't matter. It wasn't a Monday-through-Friday job. They showed up when people needed them. And, and now that they've reached that level, Karen and her crew aren't the type to downscale, even though things are opening up and people don't have to watch it on TV. Karen will never cut back. She, and she needs the resources, and her staff needs the resources to continue the service that they've provided and that people have come to depend on. And Karen and her crew wouldn't, wouldn't settle for any less. So I want to thank Westboro TV, and I hope Verizon can help us continue to provide the town with the services that she has and her team has. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Why don't we, do we have some more video we can? Karen, do we have additional video?
We do. So what I thought you could maybe do is if there's no more comments, people could feel free to take care of their obligations if they needed to go. We do want to enter into the record, record the video testimonials, so people can feel free to stay and watch those or watch them another time. But we do have, you know, 20-something minutes of testimonials, video testimonials. But people could feel free to go and watch that.
We also have several letters that were submitted. We can enter these into the record.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly read these, but why don't we give everyone, if folks want to leave, a moment to do that, and then we'll... Don't forget to watch the video at home, though. Thank you all for coming. Really appreciate it.
All right, so we'll get down to the business of closing.
So if you have a question, we'd love to hear it. Yep, yep, please.
We're still open, so.
Yep. Okay, thank you, yes, yep. So we don't want to close the public hearing because we want all of this, even if we're ready to be part of that public hearing.
Okay, so we actually have to read this later? For those watching at home, we're just waiting for the hall to, people are filtering out. Public hearing is still open, and we're still entertaining comments.
Okay, my name is Jack Morrison, 39 Morse Street. And my question is kind of on the business side of this. I know that, you know, everybody talks about cord cutting, which every time it happens, reduces what your income stream is. And I understand increasing, you know, the 4% to 5% is good, okay? But there's a lot of stuff going on in, basically in that industry related to funding, right? The thing about, you know, are we going to, you know, if people have Netflix, which of course I do, right? But are we working with at least our senators to figure out how we're going to handle this in the future? Because otherwise, we're going to wind up not being able to support Westboro TV, not because we don't want to, but because the money's not there. So I just wanted to know if at some point we're going to have a, you know, and if, by the way, if this is in your business plan, I'd be led to take a look at it. But that's basically what my question is. I'm, I'm concerned about where the money's going to come from long-term because I, obviously, it's really important to a lot of people, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. So why don't we go ahead and read some of the letters, because we want to get those into the public record? Shelby, would you like to?
Sure. So this is from Lee Emery, 5 Emery Road, Westboro. "I am writing from the perspective of 17 years' experience as an elected select woman and 10 years as an appointed member of the Advisory Finance Committee both of Westboro. A lifetime resident with two children and three grandchildren, and an ardent belief that informed citizens become engaged citizens. Westboro TV is, among other things, one, the single most supportive resource of transparency in town government by providing unedited, live, and archived complete coverage of the most influential formal town committees and boards. Two, the single most broad-based, unbiased, live and archived source of cultural and environmental supportive events. Three, a comprehensive, up-to-date, one-stop-shop of upcoming non-governmental cultural, educational, school sports and other programs of interest to all resident age groups, as well as a convenient and comprehensive schedule of town government meetings and events which it broadcasts. Three, a totally unique archive, excuse me, four, a totally unique archive of interviews with citizens about their lives, contributions to town and country, and perspectives on town history. The only way many residents can attend live or archive town committee and board meetings due to age, infirmities, family obligations, or scheduling conflicts. Final point, an alternative to attending events or meeting in person, which was invaluable and remains so during the COVID crisis and should be available in the future for unforeseen similar situations or other emergency situations. Westboro TV has systematically broadened its scope of services and offerings responding to the makeup concerns, diversity, and interests of our residents. It is an exciting, vibrant, unique, and essential source of information and entertainment for our residents. Its presence has become ingrained in the processes of our town and is unmatched by any other single entity. I feel we must do all we can to secure the operation and availability of this remarkable resource."
This letter is from Tony Ash of 40 West Street in Westboro. "Dear sirs, it is my pleasure to write a positive statement on behalf of the services provided by Westboro TV. I'm a past treasurer and current member of the Westboro Alliance Club and also a trustee on the Westboro Trust Fund. The club runs service projects and raises funds for charitable causes. One such cause is a fundraising drive to provide $1,000 scholarship to a graduating high school student who lives in Westboro. The primary source of these funds come from our Rubber Duck Derby. Last year in 2021, we communicated with Karen Henderson and Jeff Poole at Westboro TV to help us promote the event. They both went above and beyond to produce the highest-quality promotional video and video record of the event that was posted on both YouTube and their website. We continue to refer potential sponsors and donors to the videos as a reference and marketing tool. I am also aware that Westboro TV also covers many events as a public record, especially select board meetings. This is especially useful for me since, as a trustee of the Westboro Trust Fund, I need to stay current on topics that could impact the assets under management in the trust fund. Also, I feel coverage of the sports and other events throughout Westboro, the Westboro school systems helps foster a sense of community and is a very, has a very positive impact. We are lucky to have Karen and Jeff as dedicated, skilled professionals." We are lucky to have Karen and Jeff as dedicated, skilled professionals who have a sincere passion for their community and what they do. Sincerely, Tony Ash, 40 West Street.
I have before me a statement of support from Judith Tully and Joe McManus, 8 Isaac Miller Road, Westboro. Westboro Cable TV has played an important role in our family and in the community for many years. It has been a place where our children could watch themselves and their friends participate in music and theater events, as well as athletic events. This is entertaining and allows the community to enjoy school and community events they are unable to attend in person. There is also an educational component provided by Westboro TV. We've been able to follow town government meetings, which Westboro TV broadcasts live and on demand. This results in a better-informed community. Other cable TV programming is valuable, as we are able to learn and be educated on topics of interest through talk shows and presentations by residents or guest lecturers. We always appreciate that Westboro TV opens its doors to young people and offers them the opportunity to learn more, both behind the scenes and by producing their own programming. On the whole, Westboro TV's creative content and programming connects and informs us as a community. Westboro TV is a wonderful community resource, and we ask that it be sufficiently funded in order to continue to create and deliver programming for, about, and by Westboro residents.
Okay, I have a letter here from Kathy Stoker, broadcast journalism teacher at Westboro High School. For well over twenty years, Westboro High School Journalism students have collaborated with Westboro TV. In the past fifteen years, Westboro TV and the Westboro High School Journalism Program have expanded their partnership into numerous opportunities. Westboro TV offers a professional studio space for students to anchor and edit their broadcasts. Their broadcasts are shown on Westboro TV and the online school newspaper, The Lobby Observer. Karen and her staff teach, facilitate, and support students in creating their own shows, such as Full Court Press. Westboro TV also provides students authentic experiences in filming and commentating Westboro High School sports games. Throughout the years, students have secured paid and unpaid internships at Westboro TV. Students gain effective communication skills that are transferable to any college major or job in their future. Recently, the journalism students toured Polar Park, where the Wusocks play. The tour guide was Brendan Black, a Westboro High School alum who took journalism classes at Westboro High School and interned at Westboro TV throughout college. He is now the lead camera person, a producer, and content manager for the Wusocks. Ultimately, Westboro TV is a critical part of the Westboro High School community, especially for the journalism students. A last thought, a freshman student just said to me, "I can't wait to take journalism, too, so I can broadcast from Westboro TV."
I have a letter from Zach Bogner, Economic Development Coordinator for the town of Westboro. To whom it may concern, I am writing to share my overwhelmingly positive experience collaborating with Westboro TV and to encourage you to seek a renewal contract structured to provide significant funding to Westboro TV. Over the past few years, Westboro TV has cemented itself as one of our community's greatest partners to the Westboro Economic Development Committee, the EDC. Through this partnership, Westboro TV and its work provide tremendous benefit to the community by supporting business, attraction, and retention efforts. First, I am very appreciative that Westboro TV, as it does for other boards and committees, continues to broadcast EDC meetings so that members of the public who are unable to attend can access the full proceedings. This is an incredibly valuable service to the community and is my hope that continued funding for Westboro TV would enable this service to continue. Furthermore, Westboro TV has collaborated with the EDC to produce many videos highlighting local businesses, which are important because they celebrate our existing business community while also highlighting the advantages of doing business in Westboro. For example, in 2019, Westboro TV began collaborating with the EDC to produce videos showcasing each award winner at the EDC's annual Year in Review Awards Reception. These videos have been a huge hit and have breathed new life into this event. As I write this letter, Westboro TV is working on another set of videos for this year's winners. Westboro TV also created a Go Local Westboro video campaign at the COVID-19 pandemic's peak to encourage folks to shop local businesses. Not only did this series highlight local businesses at a time when they needed it most, but it is also of tremendous high quality, as evidenced by one of the videos receiving a 2021 Hometown Media Award for Excellence in Public Access Programming. Moreover, Westboro TV has collaborated with other regional partners to advance our economic development efforts. For example, the Westboro TV team has started producing videos from quarter-nine, 495 Chamber of Commerce ribbon cuttings, which celebrate new businesses opening in Westboro. Finally, Westboro TV is an integral part of the EDC's current and future marketing strategies. Since joining the town of Westboro, I have personally collaborated with Karen Henderson and her team to produce a Why Westboro marketing video to assist the EDC's effort in bringing new business to our community. We currently have a finalized script and tentative speakers for the production, and we hope to, hope to a final product soon, thanks to Westboro TV's very talented team. Ultimately, I cannot be more thankful for, to work for a community that has an asset as great as Westboro TV. Karen Henderson and her team continue to make my job as Economic Development Coordinator easier, and they have never hesitated to consider collaborating with me on work that supports the town of Westboro's economic development goals. Sincerely, Zach Bogner, Economic Development Coordinator, Town of Westboro.
I have a response to the CAC from Marion O'Connor, 14 Woodcrest Road. Dear Cable Advisory Committee, I am unable to attend the Select Board Cable Advisory Committee Hearing on Monday, March 28th, yet I believe it is important to voice my opinion. I understand that the majority of funding for Westboro TV comes directly from Verizon, our largest service provider. It is extremely important to the town, and specifically to Westboro TV, that we carefully select the best cable provided for our community. On a personal note, I have experienced the professionalism and responsiveness of Westboro TV. My experience as former superintendent of Westboro Public Schools, as well as my current active membership in several community organizations, has given me the opportunity to personally witness the active engagement of Westboro TV in critical programming. The extent of Westboro TV coverage includes our youth, seniors, community interest organizations, as well as the coverage of our town's governing bodies. All are critical in keeping Westboro residents informed and providing a digital record of our proceedings. Therefore, the selection of the best cable provider to our town is so important to the continuance of Westboro TV, an essential component of Westboro life.
Okay, I have a letter here from Kristen Belanger, Administrative Assistant, thank you, of the Planning Department of the Town of Westboro, regarding the television cable renewal license. As the Cable Advisory Committee determines whether to issue a cable television renewal license to Verizon of New England, Inc., I would like to make my statement to be taken into consideration. As an administrative assistant in the Planning Department, I am responsible for taking minutes to be posted as part of the public record. Westboro TV's recording of the meetings is vital in making the meetings accessible and transparent to the public in several ways. The recordings allow staff to go back after the meeting to ensure that notes that were taken are correct and that important details are not missed. In the event of board members unable to attend, the recording allows them to view the discussion along with other aspects that may have not been taken down in the minutes alone. Access to the recordings is valuable to the public in the same way. In addition, due to COVID, having Westboro TV's live streaming allowed the public to participate, and our projects to continue to move forward despite the restrictions for meeting in person. The recordings allowed me to handle the facilitation aspects of having either hybrid or virtual meetings, for which I would then go back after the fact to take the minutes from the, from the recording. It would not have been possible without Westboro TV's assistance. Finally, there's not enough staff for every committee to have their own administrative assistant assigned for minutes. I am currently responsible for minutes associated with planning, economic development, design review, Active Transportation Safety Committee, Master Plan, and Housing Choice Working Group. If I am unable to attend a meeting in person, I have recordings as an option. Westboro TV plays a vital role in providing the public with access to our meetings, both in real time and after the fact.
Oh, I'm still reading. Do you want to change the voice?
Sure, sure.
Okay. This letter is from Laura Serniglia. I'm writing to support a Verizon contract that is structured to fund Westboro TV. Westboro TV offers programming and services that are, I'm sorry, she's at two Old Hickory Path. Sorry about that. Westboro TV offers programming and services that are essential to the town of Westboro. The station is an integral part of the community, providing access to public meetings, supporting events, and events held by other organization. The station helps everyone in the community gain access to information that they might not be able to access any other way. The programming even keeps relatives who live out of state up to date, as they are able to watch family members participate in events. The station provides amazing opportunities for our high school students, giving them priceless firsthand experience with working for a television station. Westboro TV is always at community events, providing fun opportunities for children and their families, such as the winter stroll. Our family relies on Westboro TV for the window it provides into our town. It keeps us up to date and gives us a front row seat when we otherwise would not be able to attend events and meetings. It also helps us to capture and hold on to special events, such as high school graduation and concerts. I cannot imagine our town without Westboro TV and the amazing staff that works tirelessly for our benefit. Therefore, I hope a Verizon contract that is structured to financially support it comes to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Is that, that's it?
I do have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Sandy Wilokowski, thank you. Hello, I'm writing this letter in support of Westboro TV, an organization which is completely essential to the town of Westboro. Even before we, oh, I'm sorry, 9 McTaggart Street. Even before we were collectively forced to deal with the effects of the COVID-19 virus, Westboro TV was a valuable asset in our town. Meetings, sporting events, special commentaries, cooking shows, graduation, and many other events were broadcast to keep our community educated, connected, and entertained. Small businesses and individuals were able to get exposure they would not normally have had. School events were broadcast and gave children the chance to see themselves in their classes and teams on TV. Important sporting events were viewed and analyzed and viewed again. Kids from the high school were able to obtain internships and gain firsthand experience of being in a TV studio. They were and continue to be an important tool to keep members of our community connected in every way. In the spring of 2020, when COVID-19 disrupted our lives and we were all forced to work from our homes and log on to school classes by Zoom, Westboro TV provided all with much, with a much-needed outlet. Life carried on, and though we were restricted to be in person, to be in person, Westboro TV continued to bring the meetings and events into our home. The role of Westboro TV, though essential before this, became vital. The community would have had a hard time staying informed on all important issues facing our town if it were not for Westboro TV. In the fall of 2020, the MIAA regulated that sporting events limit the spectators. And then once again, winter sports moved indoors. Parents were not allowed to view their children's sporting events at all. Again, Westboro TV came through with live broadcasts of the games for not only the families and Westboro community to watch, but for extended families living in other states and countries. Graduation, containing many restrictions and limitations, was still able to be a celebration due to Westboro TV broadcasting the event, so the families were able to see the graduates walk. Westboro TV was a whole bunch of sunshine during a dark time in our lives. Thank you, Westboro TV, and please keep up the vital work you do for the town of Westboro and the extended families. Sandy is a parent of four and member of the community for twenty-three years.
Thank you. And I believe that concludes the written statements. If you can put those there. So now we can play the video of the last piece before we close.
So I guess it would just be a question for Bill. Do you want to play the rest of the testimonials, or can we submit that into the public record separately, without showing it during the meeting?
Yes, you can do that. The letters and the, you know, the notice are all sort of exhibits of the hearing, so you could certainly submit the video as an exhibit of the hearing, too, certainly.
So I would leave it to the discretion of the board. If you want to hear the thirty-four minutes worth of testimonials we have from people who are not here this evening, we could do that. Otherwise, we can submit it, and we'll just submit it for the record at the committee's discretion.
Any objection?
To hearing it or to?
No, I'm, I think it's totally appropriate to just accept it as an exhibit and be submitted. So I don't know, I don't think we need a motion to do that, right?
Certainly, yeah.
No objection, no objection.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the second video that is prepared as part of this, for the public hearing comments.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
And I, and I, and I hope that Westboro TV would actually play it, maybe, on its own, as, as an addendum to this meeting.
A few thousand times, maybe.
I was just going to suggest, you could read who those fifteen testimonials are from.
That would be great.
I have it. I would be, I would be happy to.
Yeah, an appreciation for their contribution.
The one with Karen Chabot at number one?
No, it starts with, sorry. It might start with Amber Bach. Do you have that?
Yes, I do. So I will read this.
Who the testimonials on that video are from, just so the public knows who else submitted those.
So this is a list of names who is, who have submitted testimonial videos for the video which Karen and team have put together. Amber Bach, the Westboro Superintendent of Schools. Arthur Bergeron, his Westboro TV show host, Frank and Mary. Bill May, Assabit, tech school teacher. Kara Presley, Director of Youth and Family Services. Chief Jeff Laurie, Westboro Police Chief. Chris Payant, Director of Westboro TBW, DPW. Dave Kaiser, Rotary Club President. Ed Bane, St. Luke's Church. Erin LePrade, Program Coordinator, Borough Sugar Shack. Joanna DeCarlo, Athletic Director, Westboro High School. Karen McKenzie, Westboro TV Show Host, Seniors on the Move. Linda Townsend, Business Owner, Paul McGraw, Westboro TV Show Host, On the Sidelines. Rachel Fredman, Student Intern. Roger Anderson, Health and Wellness Director, Westboro High School. Steve Marcharelli, Westboro High School Staff Member. And Wendy Mickel, Westboro Town Clerk. So enter that in for the record.
Thank you to all of them for their work to submit video comments.
Okay. Now comes the.
So I think we need to close the public hearing, is that correct?
Yeah, I've got that, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'd like to express my thanks to the Cable Advisory Committee, the Westboro Select Board, Attorney Bill Hewitt, Karen Henderson, those of you who are kind enough to be present here this evening, and those watching at home. My thanks also to those of you who sent in written statements and video testimonials. The information presented at this public hearing will help the Cable Advisory Committee finalize the ascertainment period and work with Verizon to prepare and recommend a final version of the cable TV license. We will be sending a copy of this meeting, all comments, the Westboro TV business plan, and budgets, along with our proposal to Verizon in the next few days. We will then have a formal meeting to go over the particulars with our attorney and present our recommendations to the Select Board for approval.
Before you close the meeting, can I make one final comment?
Absolutely.
So I'd like to comment as a member, not only of this committee, but as a Select Board member and as a resident. One of the speakers earlier this evening mentioned how many people were here in attendance, and I would imagine there are a number watching at home and those who will watch this. I am truly astounded. I've been to a lot of meetings in town. I was not here for the last negotiation of other contracts, cable contracts. We don't get this sort of turnout for our meetings, for government meetings. Obviously, for games and other types, you know, you know, theater and concerts, obviously, there's a general sort of turnout. But this public hearing has, for me, has been extremely moving in terms of really bringing home the importance of Westboro TV. So many sort of notes I have of kind of those one-liners of what this station means and the work of Karen and Jeff Poole and Aidan Horgan. And it is essential, I hope, that Verizon takes that to heart. I think it's essential that we negotiate a contract that ensures Westboro TV is a mainstay in our community for a long time to come. So thank you to everyone at Westboro TV and certainly for everyone for showing up tonight. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Shelby. Any further comments, Steve?
None from me.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the meeting of the Cable Advisory Committee.
Second that motion.
All those in favor? This public hearing is adjourned. This public hearing is adjourned, thank you very much.